Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Grand Lake Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, November 15th. We can all rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. Clerk Robertson, can you, will you please call the roll?
I'd be happy to. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White is absent. Treasurer Kilmer is absent. Myself, obviously, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five members present, a quorum.
Thank you. And now, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Ms. Hugo makes the motion, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Hugo and supported by Raridan, this is the agenda. Okay, trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And if you could provide your name and address for the record, that'd be helpful. Anybody like to make public comment? Anybody like to make public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. And at this time, we have on the agenda, a public hearing for the proposed general fund and special revenue fund budgets for 2023. The property tax mileage rates to support the proposed budgets will be a subject of this hearing. Mr. Limina?
So, at this time, you'll open up the public hearing, and this gives anybody the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget for both general fund and special revenue funds. They have been available as public documents since September 1st. We've had the copy here. We'll always have a copy at the front desk for the clerk's office to share with anybody who comes in, and we have it published electronically as well. So, open up the public hearing and take comments, and then you'll be asked to consider resolutions to approve those budgets later in the agenda.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the general fund and special revenue fund budgets for 2023. Anybody wish to make a comment? Anybody wish to make a comment? I see some shaking of heads, yes? Okay. All right, seeing no public comment, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Closed, opened at 7:04 PM, closed at 7:06 PM.
Thank you. Item B, under the public hearing, for the proposed industrial facilities exemption certificate transfer to allow the representatives of the affected taxing units an opportunity for a hearing. Mr. Limina?
So, this public hearing is here, we've been approached by a business here in Grand Lake Township that is asking to transfer an existing IFT in its Public Act 198. What that means for everybody, some edification, is that eligible manufacturers have the ability to go through our process and apply for a tax abatement up to 12 years, up to 50%. What that does is they have to provide their application, it shows that they have a certain amount of investment, it creates a certain amount of jobs, things like that, and then the dollar amount of their investment. All of those parameters equal to a couple of years, a couple of years here, a couple of years, adds up to the total of 12 years. This was approved quite some time ago, but there is existing time left. It was the TMI buildings were bought out by Kaiser Air as an eligible manufacturer that's gone in there. The public hearing is your opportunity to open up, and any of the taxing entities who would have their tax revenue reduced by the IFT, industrial facilities tax exemption, have the ability to question that with the board and question whether you should indeed transfer the remaining eligibility of this IFT certificate to the new owners.
Yes, Mr. Fike. Kaiser Air, what is that exactly? Do they make a product over there?
Yeah, they do, and is there a representative from Kaiser here? Thank you. She can probably provide some information, more information for you on what it exactly is they do, but they did come in, they purchased the facilities through their real estate arm, and is it still in the HVAC?
It is not.
Line of work, so basically, kind of the same thing, coming in and reoccupying that manufacturing facility to produce, doing much of the same work that was existing there, but they made a significant investment and brought, and kept those jobs which otherwise would have been gone. There is remaining eligibility through 2026, I believe, on the IFT certificate, and that's what they're asking to just take on the remainder of that IFT and absorb that.
Okay. Any questions from any board members?
Okay, so, we have to open the hearing?
How much is the remainder?
You said the remainder, so...
Through 2026, and it would still be, that would be the, that would, the certificate was for 12 years at 50%, so it would run, they'll just absorb the rest of that, and then they'll get that tax reduction, 50% abatement on their taxes through 2026.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Question on process here. We have a, we have a public hearing for 5A, which we opened and closed at 7:04 and 7:06 PM. Are we opening a public hearing for 5B and then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, you want to formally open the hearing at 7:09 PM?
As long as I just wanted to make sure board members' questions were answered first.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know whether we were in the midst of it or whether we had...
Nope, we will go ahead and open the public hearing to see if there's any public comment or questions. Somebody have any comments?
We have a comment.
Sure, come up forward if you could. If you could give us your name and...
Shannon Wantez, I am representing Kaiser...
Shannon?
Shannon Wantez.
W A?
H U A N T E Z.
Okay, H?
Good evening.
H U?
A N T E Z.
And your first name?
Shannon.
Shannon, and you represent?
Kaiser.
Okay, very good.
Kaiser is proud to have filled the shoes of a company that went out of business, leaving the subject building and the residence of Grand Lake Township without the new job creations it promised. Since purchasing the building and leasing from its parent company Gallagher Kaiser, Kaiser has created a multitude of jobs, invested significantly in modernizing the building. Kaiser's industrial facilities exemption certificate transfer request should be approved because Kaiser will fulfill the promises of the original IFEC applicant and then some as a new owner of the property and should receive the benefit of the abated taxes through 2026. We are not asking for any incentive beyond the township and state tax, or beyond what the Township and State Tax Commission has out of ear approved, albeit for a different applicant. We just want to fill the shoes as TMI Climate Solutions after purchasing their abandoned property and revitalizing the same.
Okay, very good. Any questions, board member? Thank you. So, any of you else who'd like to make public comment with regard to this topic? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we will close the hearing, bring it back to the board.
Close at 7:11 PM.
Yes. Thank you. With regard to item six, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Fike makes that motion, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Supported by Raridan, okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Under, on number seven, old business strategic plan update, Point North Business District. Good evening, Ms. Roberts.
Good evening. We're going to be talking about the, our Point North Business District. So, some of the things that we've accomplished recently, as you know, are setting the boundaries, creating branding for the district. We would like to talk today about creating an actual business district and how we're going to handle that, whether it will be a TIF district or just a business district where business owners in that district can come together and have a committee for the district. That would also allow us to have a, create a revolving loan fund and work on grants and that sort of thing. So, the other thing in your packet is, we had talked about changing a few things. One of the things that we can change per planning and zoning is the sign ordinance for a special district, and this is something that we can talk about as well. And... Does anyone?
I think it makes sense to look at forming the business authority, and then I think we had said we wanted to act as if we were going to form the TIF, but not necessarily go through with it, I think, the last meeting, right?
Well, we did, and so I think, I think that we've got a third option to discuss as well. First of all, we talked about the, creating the authority, the business district authority, or the corridor improvement authority, which would actually create a separate standalone entity, would require a fair amount of administrative efforts, and then whether or not you decided to have a TIF district within that corridor district, you could do that, but you didn't have to. And then I think tonight, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, but there may be another, another option, which is a little less, I guess, involved, but may, but may be more reflective of the business owners or the property owners' interests, and that would be to create something that was sort of an organization that would allow them to really kind of direct amongst themselves how they want improvements to come, and then there could be options for some loans that the township could make to them as well. And so, that would sort of be, I guess, a step back from the corridor authority. Is, am I, am I getting all those pieces sort of lined up correctly?
Those are the options for the board, yeah.
So, if you consider it at like a Point North Business Association versus an authority or the idea of creating that TIF district, why would we do that? The logic behind it is thinking that what we need to do is provide them some framework for an organization that would lift up these businesses in this area, certainly forming an authority, a corridor improvement authority, but that kind of puts it on township, and we say we're going to form an authority, we're going to put a board together of five members, and they're going to be board appointed, and now they have the ability to act without, I mean, they still have to have their budget approved by the board, there's a way to control it, but they can levy taxes, for example, or, you know, tax milages, and they can do some things like an authority can actually do, they can, they're an existing entity outside of the township government's control. So, why think about forming the business association? The thought behind it would be, is that what they really need is that framework that brings them all together, allows them to develop that association. We can delineate it, we can put the signs together for them, we can offer that revolving loan fund that we discussed previously for facade improvements, that kind of thing, but without going through the whole idea of forming a TIF district. And again, I keep cautioning the TIF district because, number one, we have a DDA that's been very successful, we didn't get any pushback on it, going to all these same taxing entities in the counties and saying, hey, we're forming another one that we want to withhold taxes from you. You know, we got one on the south, one on the north, that starts to get to be a little, could be considered a tax grab, you know, man, you guys don't want to send us any money, you're trying to keep it all to do these things. And so, there's potential for that. There's also the potential that in the area that we have designated, that the values fall, and you have a negative balance for the next decade or so, and you formed something, went through all this work, and all you've really succeeded in doing is creating additional reporting that we have to do every year, but there isn't any funds coming in to actually sustain any improvement, where it might be different through the association, where voluntarily they can come together and help create, we can work with a beautification committee, which is also up for discussion, that could maybe help lift that up. So, one of the things we'd love the board to consider is to, you know, present that. It also gauges interest, because if these people aren't engaged and want to be a part of that business association, the Point North Business Association, are they going to be engaged if we form the authority or the TIF district and look at, you know, changes in signage requirements, getting lighting, creating these other options that we have, creating, you know, special assessment districts for sidewalks and lighting? Man, if we can't get them engaged in the association, are we going to get them engaged with an authority? That might be why we're making that recommendation.
I like that idea of, you know, gauging the level of interest with an association first before we start doing all the paperwork on an actual authority. I'm not too worried about gouging the, gouging the county, just because we tend to be a donor township anyways, and we should get some of that money back, but the question I have is, we could always set up a special assessment district specifically for the area, right? I mean, if we wanted to do a lighting project or...
Lighting for sure. Specific projects, yes, absolutely.
Right, so, I mean, even though we wouldn't have an authority to set up, you know, the taxing entity or whatever, we could actually do that for them as a township and create a special assessment.
And that is one thing that we did talk to the business owners about when we first met with them, and they were, seemed willing to do something, pay, put a little money into the district.
Right.
Pay it on their taxes.
Yeah, we had somebody ask, they said, hey, I'm not all for raising taxes, but if we knew that it was going specifically for our part of the township, you know, they'd be likely to talk to everybody in their area to do that.
Right.
So, that was about a year ago, though, so, things may have changed a little bit, but we still can ask them that question.
Yeah.
I like the idea of creating an association and then moving towards, you know, an authority if, if we have the commitment and the interest. I think we will, but I'd rather take it step by step, and this might be an intermediary step first, I don't know. Any thoughts from the board on, on that? I think it makes sense. I mean, you'd have a smaller group to begin with and to see if they're, have an interest in it. Yeah. To propose that to them and say, look, you know, we could step it up a notch if you feel like this is something that you'd like. Right. But don't go in all guns ablazin' at the beginning. Yeah. And then they may be, I don't want to get involved in this, you know, this is too much work. And I'd rather see the interest come from them, too, as opposed to us pushing it to them. When you talk to the business owners, I mean, is there anything else that they told you? I mean, do they seem like that they've got a cohesive group up there?
The first meeting we had was, was large, very successful. The second meeting we had were fewer people. We're, we're planning on having another meeting possibly on the 29th, we're just checking one more schedule before we schedule that meeting, and this is something, a topic that we can broach at that time. We've also increased the district, so there are different business owners that weren't there before, so we, this would be a great time to, to talk about this and, and find out if there is interest from those business owners on being a part of the business, like the committee, the business district. Yes.
I guess the difference is voluntary, I mean, if, if we're going to do the tax district, we're going to keep funds used there, and so we would be able to spend the money for their benefit.
Right.
But here, there's, I mean, other than a loan option from us, they're not going to...
Or a special assessment district similar to a paving project or whatever, you know, if they want to, want to, they, we had a whole laundry list of improvements that they believe, you know, might be good for the area, things like doing something with the lighting, I think maybe even somebody said sidewalks, might be facade improvement, probably wouldn't do a special assessment for facade improvements, but, but some of those things could be done through a special assessment district.
But if we're capturing some of that money, we could use that money...
Yeah.
For, for the lighting, I mean, the money that they're already putting out.
But the money that we would capture is any, from any new development over and above what's here currently, and being that it's pretty well built out, it would have to be somebody probably buying something and tearing it down and improving it, or, or just buying something existing and improving it beyond where it's at now. It's going to take some substantial improvement or construction really to move the meter much on that. The DDA, for example, with guns ablazin' down there with new construction, I think we're averaging about $300,000 a year, but that's with a $50 million, you know, industrial facility being built and several other things. You know, I don't see that kind of construction up here happening, press the button here, that, you know, as quickly as what we are seeing in the DDA area.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the association, I'm just throwing it out there. Paul White would be a good one.
Yeah.
To jump in on that.
Right. Well, you know, we can always change our mind, but I think we start with the association and gauge their interest, they may be all for it, and if they have a high degree of interest and commitment, then we can go and...
My recommendation to move forward, then, is to, we'll take that map, we'll, we'll define that again that we showed you guys, we'll get that sent out to everybody, we'll talk about what we're trying to do is create the framework for a business association and a clearly defined business district, and then what would be the benefits of doing it, and then see if, the kind of interest we get when we bring them back in, like, hey, we expanded it, and we'd love representatives from all the businesses to come in and talk about what the possibilities are and how we can truly partner with an association versus create the authority. Can always create the authority later.
Yeah, and there are several things like we're going to talk about tonight that, you know, they could get involved in. Back to the bricks comes right through here, our beautification stuff, all that. All right, thank you, Ms. Roberts. Okay, Mr. Limina, ARPA fund update.
The, it, the memo's in there, was included in your packet, just to show where we are. We said we would always keep you updated on where we are. The barn renovation out at the park came in, we think it's final now at $94,870. We'd initially asked for $86,000 on ARPA funds. The board can either approve the additional or we had funds in capital improvements, which were already slated for some of the work at the barn, so we have that covered if it's not completely ARPA dollars. Our station renovations are moving forward, the board approved it at the $1.4 million to date. We have been invoiced and paid $53,000 as we move forward, and that was really just for the architect and engineering, the project manager's fees. High-speed ballot scanner, obviously, again, we have reason to believe, number one, that that worked very, very well in the most recent election, but also that there's a potential that we could get renewed aid, money, potentially. The pedestrian bridge out at, also at Bicentennial Park, $84,925 to do the land improvements, that was where the drain goes through on the nature trails, and the bridge was completely unsafe. That has been repaired by Waldorf and Sons, again, $84,925 initially approved for $94,362, so came within budget. And then the last thing was initially, we had talked about that Thompson Road Water Main project and just that small piece of the township to include the engineering at $27,720. After further review and realizing that we're not going to participate in that project at this time, we're probably going to pull that off, or have pulled that off, the ARPA projects list, and that will just be paid for with regular DPW funds as opposed to ARPA funds. It would have been more important if we were moving forward, and that project would have been in the $300,000 to $500,000 range for us to complete the extension of the water main, but it really isn't in the Grand Lake Township's best interest to move forward with that project at this time. That's kind of the full update of where we spent your ARPA dollars to date or where we've allocated them to date. We still have money to spend by December 31st of 2024, the money has to be allocated and spent. Again, I will tell you that we have more than enough ways to spend it, certainly with the projects that we're working on with the campus developments on the fire station, DPS building. In addition, my office has been without heat for the last two days while they continue to work on the, well, have been without heat, we have plug-in ceramic heaters keeping us warm, so we're not completely... But I still am going to push the board after the first of the year to earmark ARPA funds for replacing the HVAC for the general administration building, and you can expect that to be over $1 million price tag. But the units are 27 years old, we, they're, you know, I think we rebuilt the one above my office completely last year, so I thought it would be good, but we're rebuilding it again this year. Fact is, it's come time that we just need to replace and update the HVAC systems for this building. We're going to be here for a while, and we've limped along for about as long as we can, it would be an excellent use of the ARPA dollars.
Do we have those funds available to ARPA then with the remainder?
We do. I'll get a firmer estimate of the cost, I think it's going to come in about $1.4 million, but I want a firmer estimate before we present it to the board as that's probably where we need to spend the remainder of the ARPA funds at this point.
We want to make sure Melissa's warm.
Exactly, I know. I told her that we'd be happy to purchase her a vest or a, or a sweater with the logo on it.
Of course.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Limina.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, beautification committee. And I guess, want me to talk on this issue?
That's you, buddy.
So, you know, we've, we've talked about this in our strategic plan a little bit, and, you know, one of the things that has been an impetus, we actually, actually had a couple of people, a couple of entities asked to assist with this, and with General Motors locating their historic center in the GMSPO, had a number of organizations in that area ask, hey, you know, they're going to have a lot of visitors coming to and from the areas, or anything we can do for that area to make sure when people are coming to visit that it looks appealing. Also had a couple of church groups around that have asked about some of the overpasses, and talked to Mr. Sears in our DPW about maybe, you know, price on bringing the street sweeper through a few times a year, maybe it's every other month, what have you, but I think the last time that we had one go over 475 on Hill Road, I forget how many tons of debris was removed, but it was a significant amount. It just seems like those overpasses and now the roundabout seem to be a catch-all for lots of debris, and if we can clean that up, for example, if, if we targeted just the overpasses, for example, we have Hill Road, at 475, we have the Holly Road Overpass, we have the roundabouts on Dort and the overpass, we have South Saginaw Street, and I've spoken with businesses and organizations in the vicinity of each of those alone, and we have groups that would be willing to undertake that as, you know, their mission to help keep that area clean. The one dilemma, you know, you see some areas that have plantings at the exits and the entrance to Expressway. Vienna Township's a perfect example, if you get off the Expressway at Vienna Road during the summer months anyways, you'll see just some beautiful plantings right there at the exits and entrance on 75. You also, you know, you go up to Marquette and you see, you know, plantings near the roundabouts, and it's just absolutely beautiful. The dilemma is keeping that stuff watered, and Vienna Township, for example, has a truck with a big tank on the back of it that they, have some volunteers and I believe some summer intern help that, that go around and water that, and I've spoken to their supervisor up there, and he'd be willing to share whatever information he can, but I think if we did, made that one of our, you know, projects for this next summer, we have the whole winter to put that together, and we can look at what type of plantings would require the least amount of, you know, upkeep, but we can also maybe meet with some of these groups that, that have come forward saying that they want to help, and we can get some prices on the street sweeping, and I don't know if that's something that this board would like to see us pursue, but I think it's, it's worthy to look at anyways.
I agree.
Yeah, there's not much I like about Ohio, but their overpasses are usually pretty good.
Yes, those areas are, it makes you want to get off the Expressway and see what else is going on there.
It, we, we need this.
Yes. So, any board members who would like to serve on that, we'll probably be having an organizing meeting, and we'll invite some of these groups that have come forward to say they want to help. You know, it makes sense that, for example, Elga, which is at 475 and Hill Road, they've, they've offered their assistance with that. Actually, Faith Lutheran Church on Holly Road has said, hey, sign us up for helping at the Holly Road Overpass. Actually, Faith Lutheran Church on Holly Road has said, hey, sign us up for helping at the Holly Road Overpass. And so on and so forth. So Food Castle said they would help at the roundabouts at Dort. So we've got some, some good starting point right there. So, okay. So if any of you want to volunteer to serve on that, let me know and we'll make sure that you're part of the planning process.
I will.
Yes.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, great, thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
All right, under new business, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five to approve the two thousand twenty-three general fund budget. Mr. Limada?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As you guys know, the, we're finally at the formal adoption phase of our budgeting process. It started back in June as we started to gather information. The information went out to department heads in July. We held various meetings and worked through the budget. Tonight, you're being asked to walk through and approve resolutions for both the general fund budget and then the special revenue funds budget, a motion to approve the DPW water and sewer budgets as well. And the fee schedule, tonight, you saw there was no public comment for the public hearing on the budgets. So I would ask if there's any questions. We do have Finance Director Kathy Sostak is here this evening as well to answer any questions you may have about the process or with the resolutions or the dollar amounts themselves. I think it's pretty straightforward. You've got a total general fund revenue of twenty million one hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We do have it broken out by the, where the revenue comes from. Primarily taxes are your number one, you know, collection as you would expect. Also, state revenue sharing is number two. And then the various others through bond proceeds and whatnot. You look at your expenditures, obviously, it's a balanced budget, twenty million nine hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars go out in the general fund. Again, spread out through all the departments. Police is your number one. With, with this at nine million dollars, that is not included capital expenditures or the building fund. You know, with various other, you know, public services, because the, the special assessment districts are in there at three point four million dollars. Fire at one point eight million dollars, appropriating two point three million dollars as well. The vast majority of our expenditures come from our, our people. You know, as a municipal government organization, local government, what we do is we take in tax revenues and we provide services. So when we talk about our budget, it's really is, is has to do with the people who deliver the, the great services that the folks in Grand Blank Township have come to expect. And so when we talk about what can we do about our budget, you saw in our budget presentation, the three things that you have to do is you have to assess properties, you have to collect taxes, and you have to run elections. So when you look at your overall budget and how it was spread out, it's important that you look at those. Those are statutory requirements that this board carries out. Everything else is, is discretionary in how you allocate those funds. You've had the opportunity to go through since September first. We've done our budget presentations, we've answered questions, we've made adjustments based on the feedback from the board. We've included the things that we believe will allow you to accomplish your strategic plan goals. At this point, again, if there's any questions, be happy to answer them from the board. Again, Finance Director Kathy is here as well. If not, then we would ask that you support the motion to approve the resolution approving the general funds budget as presented.
Any questions, Mr. Raridan?
I'll make the.
Okay, you're making the motion?
Motion by Raridan.
Supported by Fike.
Supported by Fike. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-six to approve the two thousand twenty-three special revenue funds budget. Mr. Limada?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Again, you're being asked to look at the special revenue funds budget. Again, a balanced budget has been presented for you. The revenue comes in at eight million one hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Capital Projects Fund is the biggest one, accounts for two point eight million dollars. You also have Parks and Recreation at nearly one point seven and Solid Waste Disposal at nearly one point seven million dollars. Included in here is the Building Department, the PEG funds, the Drug Forfeiture Funds and Federal Law Equitable Sharing Fund, as well as the CDBG funds and the Municipal Campus Project Fund, which is really the amount we spend for the police department bonds, which is equal to about seven hundred and seven thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-three. The expenditures go out for those exact same projects. And again, it's a balanced budget, eight billion one hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Have had the opportunity to get your questions asked and answered. I hope we're here to answer any questions you may have. If not, we would hope the board would support a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Any questions or concerns?
I'll make the motion if that's an order, Mr. Supervisor.
It is, supported by Ms. Hugo.
Supported by Hugo, supported, supported by Hugo. Okay, trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, the board will consider a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three Department of Public Works budget. Mr. Limada?
Thank you, again, not sound like a broken record, but the DPW budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, you've had the opportunity to review it. This does not require a resolution. You can approve this through a simple motion. Again, these are the enterprise funds. When we talk about the difference between our, our governmental funds and our business funds or enterprise funds, this is the water and sewer budget. We're talking about revenues of twenty-one million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and expenditures for the same amount, including capital fees, of nine hundred thousand dollars being collected. This budget, these budgets are completely driven on the users who use both water and sewer systems, so that is collected through both capital fees, ready-to-serve charges and the rates we charge. As I mentioned earlier, the fee schedule is also on your agenda for adoption. That fee schedule that you're being asked to adopt does have any rate changes in there. They are, were minimal this year. Director of Public Services, Jeff Sears is here to answer any additional questions the board may have. But if you've had the opportunity to study the rates that are going to support this budget and you're prepared to move forward, then we would respectfully request a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three DPW budget as presented.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hugo.
Motion by Hugo?
Supported by Dr. Raridan.
Supported by Raridan. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven for the Charter Township of Grand Blank Board to choose to opt out of the requirements of PA one fifty-two of two thousand and eleven for its current plan year due to the fact that employees pay twenty percent of their healthcare premiums. Mr. Limada?
Mr. Supervisor, the Public Act one fifty-two was approved by the state legislature back in August two thousand and eleven. And what it purported to do was deliver a hard cap for the amount that public employers could pay towards their employees' medical care. This board has since that time opted out of Public Act one fifty-two. It is required to be done annually. We do have language in all of our represented union collective bargaining agreements that we will continue to opt out of Public Act one fifty-two. And when we do that, we're saying that the employees will continue to pay twenty percent of their medical costs in lieu of the hard cap. The hard cap changes every year. It's set based upon a variety of things, but it, it really looks at the inflation rate increases on what they believe are acceptable medical costs for that twelve-month. I included the sheet from the State of Michigan Department of Treasury with the medical benefit plan coverage and what those were. I also included a copy in your packet that shows what the employer yearly cost is for both the Blue Cross Blue Shield and the Blue Care Network plans, what that would mean against the State of Michigan hard cap and then the employee's yearly cost. Those costs do include the expected deductibles. When we put our plan together, we say, as you guys know, we have a, a HSA account that we treat like, or an HRA account that we treat like an HSA, where we put the deductible amount. We, we allocate that duct, the full deductible amount of six thousand dollars for a family deductible, for example. And we say that that's part of our employee or employer costs. Obviously, we don't use all of it, but we budget for all of it because we don't know how much we're going to go through in any given year. When you adopt the hard cap, if you decide to not opt out and choose to adopt that hard cap, then those dollar amounts are just handed to us every year. And we say, this is what the State of Michigan tells us we're allowed to spend. And it makes the employees liable for anything above and beyond those costs. Makes it a little bit trickier from an employee's standpoint to know where they're at. It could, the way we've looked at it over the years is some years it would have cost us more money. Some years it would have cost us less money to adopt it. We much prefer the straight twenty percent. Employees know that our healthcare costs vary. They generally go up every year, as you would expect, but they know that they're covering twenty percent of it. We're not relying on a calculation from the Department of Treasury to tell us what that number may be. We just know that as employees, we're going to pay twenty percent of our medical coverage costs. So once again, this is before you. I tried to provide enough information. It comes before the board every year. It has since two thousand and eleven. And we would respectfully ask for a motion to consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven to choose to opt out of the requirements of Public Act one fifty-two again for two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Fike, you care to make that motion?
I would make the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Motion by Fike, supported by Hugo. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-eight to adopt the township fee schedule to support the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budgets. Mr. Limada had mentioned this, it was in the packet. Discussion or concerns, yes?
Just a question. I've, I've got, we've got obviously the fee schedule in our packet, but it makes, we, the agenda makes reference to resolution twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Is there a resolution in resolution form or is the fee, the fee schedule itself the resolution?
Pardon me?
Do you understand my question? There's no wherazas.
Yeah.
Do you understand my meaning?
A resolution in the packet.
Okay, the fee schedule is the resolution.
Yeah, why don't you treat it as a resolution?
Okay, I did, just point of clarification. Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor.
You're welcome. Any concerns with the free fee schedule as presented? Care to make the motion to move forward on, Mr. Fike?
Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Okay, motion by Fike, supported by Hugo, twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, the board will consider a motion for approval to purchase a replacement breathing air compressor used for filling self-contained breathing apparatus, US CBA cylinders from McQueen Equipment for forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. And authorize the superintendent to sign all purchase and warranty contracts. Chief Burdette, good evening.
Okay, on November third, we held a bid opening for BidNet for a breathing air compressor replacement. Ours is thirty-six years old and it's time to say goodbye to it. We are asking for the approval to purchase a new air compressor, Arctic brand, from McQueen Emergency for forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. The unit is a two-cylinder unit that will fill our cylinders at a faster rate than our present unit is and also has all the NFPA safety features that are required for them.
So is this housed right in the fire department building then?
Yes, it is. This is housed out at our number two station.
Okay.
Baltimore.
And it'll stay there through the renovation? Are you going to move it to the new station, you think, or?
It'll stay there. We're, we'll plan on purchasing another one for the new station.
Okay, all right, very good. Any questions or concerns for Chief Burdette?
Is this budgeted?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, it is in part of our two thousand and two budget.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion if there's no other questions or concerns. Ms. Hugo, make that motion, supported by Mr. Fike.
You said Hugo?
Yes.
And Fike. Okay. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you, chief. Item G, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-nine to approve the transfer of an industrial facility's exemption certificate for Chaos Air located at Two Hundred Quality Way. Any thoughts or concerns? Care to make the motion, Mr. Dr. Raridan? Supported by Mr. Fike.
Motion by Raridan, supported by Fike. Supported by Fike, very good. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item H, the board will consider the hiring of Lieutenant Bill Rennie to serve as the next chief of police for Grand Blank Township. Mr. Limada?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Lieutenant Bill Rennie is with us this evening. And just to kind of, I put it all in the packet, but to recap the process, the board hired Walsh Municipal Services as your recruiter to work through this recruitment process. Happy to say that we had a really amazing turnout. We had twenty-six or twenty-seven applicants, came from ten states. Some from quite large departments, some from smaller departments, chiefs with a number of years of experience, a lot of captains, lieutenants. Very, I couldn't be happier with, with the quality of the candidates that we received. The recruiter took it down initially to a top twelve list. From the top twelve list, we took it down to what we felt was the top five candidates. All of those candidates were interviewed by your recruiter, Frank Walsh. And then he moved all five of them forward from the initial interviews. We, we had a panel interview. We had two outside chiefs assist us in our panel interviews who were very impressed with the quality of our, our candidates as well. They made a tough decision, but in the end, two candidates rose to the top. One was external, one was internal. Lieutenant Bill Rennie was that internal candidate. I couldn't be more impressed with the assistance that we got from Mr. Walsh and, and Walsh Municipal Services. I couldn't, also couldn't be more impressed with the, with the quality of our internal candidates. I'm, I'm happy to say that, and I think that speaks very, very well for our department with succession planning and, and the experience that they gain within our own department. Also, Lieutenant Rennie really rose to the top in there and I feel very, very confident when I say I want to present him for your consideration to be our next chief of police, to be the next leader for us for however many years we could keep him here. Lieutenant Rennie is here this evening and I'd ask him to come up to the podium now. And he'd be happy to answer any questions that this ma, the board may have for him so that you can feel a little more comfortable in your decision moving forward.
Good evening. Congratulations on making it through the interview process and rising to the top. I did review the resumes along with Dr. Raridan. And we were very impressed with the quality of all the candidates that applied for the position. I think, you know, speaks well, speaks very highly for you. You know, we had people ask, well, you know, we have internal candidates, yes, but, you know, it's a nationwide search. And when our candidate, you know, internal candidate comes out on top, it just shows that, you know, we've got the top police in the. comes out on top, it just shows that, you know, we've got the top police in the, one of the top in the country. How's that? So.
I appreciate that, and the field was definitely tough, and it does feel great to stand here in front of you as the next candidate for our chief of police.
So could you tell us a little bit about your policing style and philosophy and what your thoughts are for the future of Grand Blank Township Police?
Yeah, so my philosophy is to continue working with our community to provide those excellent services that we already provide throughout Grand Blank Township. Superintendent Limita hit on it perfect, when most of our budget is through the employees, and the township expects us to provide exceptional service. So that's actually part of our mission statement, is providing exceptional service with the community. So how, how we do that is fast response times. We have to build trust and legitimacy. That's actually one of the pillars for the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and we're going to continue also being out there on enforcement and to conduct traffic task for traffic safety and a deterrence and education for our public.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Perhaps the public doesn't know you, or someone in our community. What will you do to get out to meet people and, you know, see the public?
Yeah, so as an officer, I was always out in the field. It's funny how roles start to change. You know, when you first become a police officer, your role is to go out there and to catch bad guys, you know, keeping our community safe. I was very good at that. Whatever I set my mind to, I'm 110% all in. You know, as a supervisor, when I was promoted to sergeant in 2014, that role changed a little bit. It was not only getting out there and leading by example, but it was also mentoring our, our staff, you know, to provide those excellent services to our citizens, explaining to why, of why we do things. As a lieutenant, my role started to change. I was lieutenant over the patrol division at one, one point. I currently sit over our, the oversight for our detective bureau. It has provided me with more opportunities to get out there in the public. I actually organize and coordinate our National Night Out program. I'm the one that puts on the coffee with the cop. So I'm actually getting out there more and more, and I know as our next chief of police, that's expected to be even more. So I expect to get out there in the community, showing the people who I am and my communication style.
What are the challenges for our community with policing?
So one of our biggest challenges right now across the U.S. with, in regards to law enforcement, is recruiting and retention. So I think that we're ahead of the game already. We have a great recruiting division right now. We're starting to have some applicants stacked up. MCOS, which is a governing body for police officer certification, they recently came out with a grant, I believe it was until 2027, that's going to allow us to sponsor new officers to the police academy, which is going to save money on the township. It's also going to bring more officers in. Maybe they just weren't able to provide the money at the time to go through the police academy. We also have a cadet program that we started that took effect on August 2nd. I was responsible for creating that cadet program. So, and what that entails is reaching out to our youth, again, mentorship, bringing them onto our police department, and I think it's building a relationship with our employees that that's what's going to keep them here in Grand Blank Township. So we have that all under control, I believe.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Raridan?
So I've had the pleasure of watching you from U Patrolman to here. And so as, when, when you were in patrol, you were, I would say you were pretty aggressive as a police person. You, you, matter of fact, I selected you to do something specifically because of how good you were. But now you're going to be chief. Is emphasis on policing, is it on being the police person, or being more, I don't know, community oriented? You know, the guardian versus the warrior?
Oh, you need both. Oh, the community expects us to treat them with respect, and that's where the community aspect comes in. And even when we're out there doing enforcement, one of my biggest things is to always treat everybody with respect. I believe that once you treat people with that respect, you get more in return. It's going to solve, it kind of goes into community policing. Even if you make an arrest, you can still obtain some information. Maybe there's something going on within Grand Blank Township. Maybe it's the person who's breaking into cars, that if you treat that person correctly, they're more apt to give you the right information. So, and that's how community policing and the law enforcement side kind of coincide together. So, both, I would say.
Yes, Dr. Robertson?
A question. We are a township of 40,000 people in the suburbs of Flint, Michigan, and not a particularly quiet, safe place, unfortunately. What, what keeps you up at night? What is your, as you, as you enter into this position, what is it that you, what, that you worry about the most, or what is it that, that you are most concerned going forward?
Well, the most concerning thing to me is my people that are within our agency. So I want to watch out for them. I want to make sure that they're always out there doing the right thing. I am a man of accountability. So I think our entire staff could vouch for me. If they are doing something wrong, or if they are not working, I'm going to be the first one to hold them accountable for their improper actions. So that's the thing that keeps me up at night. I just want our guys and girls to do, continue to do the right thing.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Welcome.
And one last thing, it's more of a comment than a question, is that with the school shootings, especially the travesty in Uvalde, I would like to suggest that we be really proactive in how we address schools.
Yeah, the active shooter. So we have two great officers on staff.
Yeah.
School resource officers and Sergeant Schwartz, who's specifically trained in active shooter. We actually have a great facility within our police department to really train on that, so for active shooter stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm thinking, I mean, yes, that's good, and I, and I agree, we should. But, you know, the protocols, when the first officer arrives, you know, I would hate to see something.
No, we're going to go in.
Okay.
And face the danger.
Yeah. I, I understand and, you know, agree, Dr. Raridan. In fact, I had this conversation with Chief Wiles before he left, and also with Mr. Limita, that, you know, in, in watching some of the aftermath of some of the shootings, you know, was everything done that could have been done? And Chief Wiles' response to me was, is that anything that they ask that the city or Grand Blank Township Police has asked of the school district, they've done. And, and so I believe, and I'm sure you'll have a very good working relationship with, with both of those entities as well, to make sure that everything is being done, that can be done. And I know, you know, we're accountable here too, because when there is one of those type horrific things that go on, people look to their leaders, elected leaders as well, as to whether or not everything was done.
I'm confident that our men and women would have the courage to go in there and enter right away.
I think so too. I think so too, but I just, you know, it's something that you have to impress upon people, and especially, we're getting a new group of people from, especially when I was there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Well, we don't want to bring in rest of the candidates and interview them. I think we trust Mr. Limita, and we really put our faith in you as well, Lieutenant, and think that we're very glad that we have somebody internal that, you know, and you and I spoke, and, you know, you helped build this department to where it is. You've been with the, with the force how long now? 20?
21 and a half years, sir.
So 21 and a half years, Lieutenant's been helping to build this, and I think for him to be able to see, you know, that it continues going in that direction is something we want as well. Yes, Dr. Raridan?
I would like to make the motion that.
The motion is ordered.
Is, is this one that we would make a motion on tonight?
Absolutely. My request is that you'd make a motion, accepting the recommendation for Lieutenant Rennie to become our next chief of police, and authorize the superintendent to finalize the employment agreement. In fact, I do have a, a copy for you guys to look through. Lieutenant Rennie and I have gone through the employment agreement. I've got a clean copy for everyone to consider, and, and then if you make that motion to make him your next chief of police, the next thing is, and when we're in closed session, I can, we can talk about the negotiations, and then we'll come out of there, and you can make the motion to authorize that contract.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make, it'll be my privilege and honor to make that motion.
I'll support that.
Motion by Raridan, support by Bennett?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you, and looking forward to continuing, moving the police department forward. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bill? 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 Wow. Wow.
Chief?
You're funny.
Hey, Chief.
Okay, very good. Very good.
Okay, item I, the board will consider a motion to approve Resolution 22-30 to set the public hearing date for the Kings Point Special Assessment District. Mr. Limita, are we bringing up Mr. Sears for this, or?
Mr. Sears, need to add anything? This resolution, they have gone through, it's been verified, they had more than 51% of the respondents are interested in completing the special assessment district. This resolution is nothing more than to set the public hearing date, and if you guys would consider that motion to approve it, so we can set the public hearing date, which is for the 29th of November.
Very good. Make that motion, Ms. Hugo.
Motion by Hugo?
Supported by Raridan.
Raridan? Okay, support. Very good. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Future agenda items? Anybody have anything pressing that I'd like you to recover? Mr. Limita, anything that you want to just wait and, we'll see what, we'll see what we'll put on the agenda. Okay, Ms. Hugo, anything with Planning Commission to report on?
No, we did not have a meeting this month, and our next meeting is scheduled for December 1st.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fike, anything?
We have no meeting this month. It was canceled for tomorrow. It's, it will be next month.
Okay. Anything, Raridan, anything?
We just hired a new police chief.
Not quite.
Not quite.
Okay, let's see here, heard, Dr. Raridan?
Robertson?
Robertson.
Okay. Yes, I do. I have, I thought the, the board and public might be curious to know that we had a report on the recently concluded election. We had 60 same-day registrations in this office on election day. Okay? At least 40 verifications, which was that they, that they had to be, they had, we had to verify them here because they registered within 14 days of the election, as required by law. We had many, many calls on it, and people wanting to know where to vote, not surprisingly, because, you know, people being who they are, they want to know where, where to vote. We issued 9,348 absentee ballots. To give you a contrast, in 2018, which was the last gubernatorial election, off mid-year election, we issued 5,300. So it went from 53 to 9,348. We had 8,899 of those 934, 348 ballots returned, which was a 96.26% return rate. Okay? 9,989 people voted at their polling location. We have 29,973 active registered voters, and according to our arithmetic, that means there was a 63% turnout of the electorate on, a week ago today. So it was a, an enormous undertaking, and I, my hat goes off to, to Lynn Henry and the, and the staff that she built around this, around her for this purpose. And we came through, through it with flying colors, if I may say so. Okay.
Yeah, the, you're right, Dr. Robertson, that you and your staff did a phenomenal job. I mean, a number of people in here that had questions, I mean, we had people that woke up that morning and decided they probably should register to vote, and weren't sure where to go, what have you, and as crazy as it got, everybody's patient with, with our residents, and I thought it went very well. So congratulations to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Laddie, anything to report on?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Limita?
A couple things, actually. Director Sears and I were at the road commission last week, talked about the road improvement plan. We did have the conversation, and that $150,000 that the board requested to be in that 10%, 10% match for the special assessment districts was just in the budget, is in, in there for the budget that you just approved. We discussed that with the road commission as we developed our 2023 road improvement plan. We, it's actually through 2025. We talked a lot about the projects that are coming up. We'll bring those up and share that information with the board at a, at a later date. We've got another meeting. We'll have a couple of these before it actually goes into work, but just rest assured that we're still making significant progress on our paving projects for 2023. We putting things together, but including CGB, CDBG funds for Genesee Road from Hill to Maple, Auker and Park, the entirety will be covered by CDBG funds, so that's great. We're using those dollars like we should in a low-mod area that qualifies for it. And then, again, we've got a variety of work done. I know Cook Road is a big one, from Embry to Holly, that is going to be a 2024 job, so I think that's important, just remind people, when they're mad, as it starts to fall apart over the winter into the spring, we understand it's, it's a terrible road for those of you who drive on it, like Supervisor Bennett.
Can we put a sign up on, on there? Scheduled for 2024 repaving.
I tell people that we are very aware of it, and in fact, Supervisor Bennett drives on it every day. In fact, a couple of times a day, I'm quite sure. So I assure you that that is still top of mind for us, but it is a federally funded project, and it is slated, we are going to get it done. 2023 Grand Blank Road, Porter to Dort, widen to three lanes and resurface. Saginaw Road from McCandlish North is going to be widened for five lanes, like we have that left turn lane all the way from the city to McCandlish, which is important, because right now it dip, it cuts down, and we lose that left turn lane. We're going to keep that widened, so that is a big deal to, to see that moving forward. Signals at Hill Road, Fenton to Saginaw are going to be upgraded. The Perry Road Trail, Phase Two, is going to move forward in 2023. That trail is going to connect, as we talk about non-motorized trail plans, so it connects us to the Village of Goodrich. Atlas Township is part of the Iron Bell Trail, so again, big deal, we're making some significant progress. Saginaw Road in 2024, Interstate 75 to McCandlish on a resurface. 2024 also, Grand Blank Road, Fenton to Porter. 2024, new signal for Saginaw on Baldwin. Seems to be some accidents there. They're trying to figure out, they're going to put a new signalized intersection there to assist with those.
Where is that at? The last one?
Saginaw on Baldwin. So again, as we talk about Baldwin Road, we're nearly complete with our road project, our upgrades on Baldwin. The next phase also will be to extend that Class A upgrade road from where we stopped at Ruby Street, all the way down to from where we stopped at Ruby Street, all the way down to the intersection of Baldwin and Saginaw. And that's where they're talking about 2024, putting new signals in there.
You didn't say roundabout.
No roundabout. Although, yeah, as you know, I'm a big proponent of roundabouts, I love roundabouts. And finally, Center Road Bridge over Thread Creek, structural replacement there. There's some township roads that we're looking at. But again, we'll present those in a better plan as we move forward. The rest of it is just catch, basins, crack, sealing, gravel, resurfacing, and some ditching work.
On a related note, Mr. Limata, I received a phone call from one of the media, members of the media today with regard to the intersection at Hill and Fenton. Evidently, a study was just released, or press release went out with the 10 most dangerous intersections in the county. And Hill and Fenton, again, I don't know if it's at the top of the list, but it's in the top 10 anyways. I, I mentioned that I believe it's probably one of the busiest. I think I've read where it's the busiest intersection in the county. So stands to reason, it probably, just on a percentage basis, will have more accidents. But they were asking if there's anything that we plan to do. And I said, you know, I, the county is the one that would be in charge of the roads. But I think there has been some effort made possibly in the past. I don't know if it's enforcement efforts or what, but I recall reading that there was going to be some efforts to try and mitigate the number of accidents that occur there. But I don't know if that came up in your discussion with the road commissioner or not.
We didn't talk about that intersection specifically, but I've been hearing about that intersection since I first got here. And I avoided it at all costs.
Yeah, I don't know what you do.
If more people were like me, it wouldn't be so bad.
Yeah. I don't know what you do to mitigate accidents at an intersection like that, I don't know.
I, I don't either, I know it's been studied. It, it's just a tough one, and that's something, you know, from a law enforcement perspective, that these guys certainly probably get their fair share of calls to respond out there.
Right.
I don't know what else, what steps they can take to, to try to assist. But people have more patience, you'll get through the light, take a breath, relax.
I happened to be picking up some McDonald's for our election workers on election night. And while sitting in the drive-thru, actually, one of our officers arrested somebody, evidently DUI near there. We are patrolling that intersection.
That's good.
Anything else, Mr. Limata?
Yeah, I want to thank the staff for the budget process, because again, I love how well that we perform in our budget process, how well we do with our estimation of revenues. Because if we get that wrong, then the rest of it, we're in deep trouble. Hats off to Finance Director Kathy Sostek, she is a wizard at this stuff. She, she makes all of us look good, keeps us on track. Her projections are always top-notch. So we really want to, you know, hats off to Kathy, because this process would not work without her and her due diligence. But all the staff that gets involved, all the department directors, without them, we would be lost. Also, I want to thank Interim Chief Bowserman. He's done an amazing job keeping wheels on the ground over at the police department. He stepped up when we needed him to. He's done a fantastic job leading us. Obviously, he could have been maybe a tough competition for Bill, but he is going to, we're putting him out to pasture in July at Charlie's Forever Farm, where he will live out the rest of his days very happily. Huge thank you to him. And then lastly, thanks to, to Bill Rennie. Really appreciate the process, appreciate the straight-up honesty. One thing you guys are going to find working with Bill, ask him a question, he'll give you an answer. And as you guys know, I really respect that, I'm the same way. And so I'm really looking forward, appreciate the board's support, because I think we have a fantastic leader who's going to lead us into the, into the next round. Again, I will ask you for a closed session this evening, it is on the agenda. And that is to provide you with an update and discuss strategy and negotiations around the contracts that we have for our three police collective bargaining agreements.
Yes, Clerk Robertson.
One more thing before we, before we conclude the open session. I, I had, I have to tell you that sometimes you, you come across things that make you laugh out loud. And I must tell you that I was reading the, the police report and, for October of 2022. And there's, and perhaps the others on the board saw it as well. But we have a segment here under retail fraud. Appears that the, that we apprehended a shoplifter at Walmart because they were arguing in the parking lot. And why were these three people apprehended and arguing in the parking lot? Because their getaway car ran out of gas. I thought to myself, you can't make this stuff up. And I do sometimes wonder how you guys can keep a straight face under these circumstances sometimes. But I thought it was worth noting that we got a good chuckle out of, out of their plight, so to speak. Yeah, so that's all I have, Mr. Supervisor.
And I, and Mr. Limata had mentioned, you know, the budget process. And you're absolutely right, you don't want to take anybody for granted, because that, the whole budget process, you know, you go to other municipalities or hear the horror stories of what's going on budget-wise. And, you know, we have phenomenal staff here that keeps us balanced and makes sure that we don't over spend. But you guys do a phenomenal job, Dennis and all your staff, putting that together. We definitely don't want to take that for granted. And then what's even better is at the end of the year, when we look at how closely we came to predicting what our revenues were going to be and expenses, and very little difference between the two. Thank you.
Dennis' birthday tomorrow.
That's right.
Dennis?
Dennis' birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday, Dennis.
It's true.
Okay.
It's a fact, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so.
With that, would somebody care to make a motion to go into executive session?
Close session.
Close session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Fike.
To discuss the strategy and negotiation, and also.
Supported by Hugo. We are, let's see, shall we, will we have a vote here? Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
We are entering into closed session at 8:19 PM.
Okay, I don't know if.